Good afternoon. Today is Monday, January 4th, and I'm pleased to say the year 2021. So 2020 is behind us. Everything is better now. We have no problems, right? So we're glad that you're here with us today, honored that you would join us on this first Monday in January of 2021, and I hope you find your time with us profitable. So it's the tradition of this board that we do a couple of things. We're going to have a pledge. We're also going to have a prayer from our chaplain. This prayer is for the commissioners. It's not for you. It's for us. What we do here, we take very seriously, and we seek wisdom where we can get it, and certainly we need wisdom this year as we face a lot of issues. So Chaplain Taylor, if you'll come forward. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we're so grateful that you've brought us through 2020, and we thank for the work that county commissioners did last year. We come to this first meeting today, we thank for the opportunity to stand at their behalf, and thanks for the work that they do, Lord, to pray that they know them of the wisdom they need, dear Lord, and help us with this meeting and help them, dear Lord, pass the privilege that we have today, and thank for Rowan County, Lord, guide and direct them today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. I'd add, Chaplain Taylor, we got a lot of folks that are hurting in our community, dealing with health issues, folks that are close to us here on the board, and so we would ask that the community continue to pray for their friends and neighbors. It's great news that we have these shots that are coming our way, but things we still need to deal with, and so just please continue to remember those around us who are hurting.
I just wanted to encourage the public to get their vaccinations when it's their turn. I'm a living example of one of the people that went through the trial vaccine, so my last shot was in September, and I am still here to talk about it. So please get your shots.
Thank you, Judy. We're glad you're here. Yeah. All right, let's see, on the agenda, I've got a couple of changes. Agenda item number eight, we're going to remove that from the active agenda, and we're going to move that, if you're okay with it, to item number consent, consent item L. We're going to move it to consent item L, and we're going to do that with a correction on there. There was a corrected application that was replaced on this, so with that application, we're going to move that to consent item L on the agenda. The other thing is, we've been provided with another item from Manager Church and Randy Kress regarding our grant program, and so we'll replace that on item number eight, that we just vacated that spot, so that'll become item number eight. Are there any other additions or deletions? Aaron, does that get it?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, if no other changes, then a motion to approve the agenda is amended.
So moved.
Thank you, Craig. Second, Judy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's see. And then the minutes from December 7th and December 19th were provided to us. Any corrections to those? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Some.
Craig, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then the consent agenda's been amended. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
Second.
Judy and Craig, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. April, is Jim with us yet? Okay, Jim Green's trying to get in on Zoom. Wasn't able to. Okay, good. Just, yeah, just let us know when he's in. All right, let's see. Any public comment, Jay, you know of?
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
You're here for the zoning hearing?
Yes.
This is for the zoning hearing, which is... What item is that, Shane?
First day of 20.
Which one are you here for?
Number two.
No, two. Yeah, so you'll be invited forward at that time.
All right, so other than that, no one?
No, sir.
Does the press have anything to say about the Alabama football game this week? Want to add anything? No? Okay. All right, we'll move on then to item number three. This is a public hearing, Z dash zero seven two zero, and presenting will be Aaron Hoplin. Aaron, Happy New Year, welcome.
Happy New Year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I can get this pulled up here. So we have a... Uh-oh.
She goes so fast.
Yep. All right.
All right. So we have a request, Z zero seven twenty, a request from RR to CBI with a conditional district for tax parcel 751 oh thirty-eight, which is approximately the 8200 block of Statesville Boulevard. There we go. Tax parcel 751 oh thirty-eight is an 11.71 acre parcel that's currently zoned, a rural residential. Now, if we take a look now, currently, the property is just a empty field and some wooded This property is located in Area One of the Western Area Land Use Plan and inside the US 70 corridor overlay, and the plan encourages commercial industrial uses that have transportation dependency due to the availability of US highway and rail access. And then along with that, it recommends quality building design and appearance. Then the consistency with the requested district, CBI district is generally appropriate in areas that are recommended as highway business along identified NC and US highways and potential commercial corridors. The request is also in the Yadkin River Water Supply Watershed Four, and in that watershed, we have a 36% built upon limit prior to requiring an SNIA permit, but the proposed development is under that allotment, so they wouldn't be required to get one. So we take a look at compatibility uses, and the current district, RR, it's mostly a residential district with most of the uses being permitted as rural home occupations, while the requested district is for one use only, which would be a land clearing contractor. So with the submitted site plan, what we have here is a fenced off area and a gravel lot that would have a equipment shed along this area here, close to the property line, and then we'd have an office slash shop. And then along with it, it's mostly just a gravel yard around it, connecting it with some parking areas along the shop here, and then generally fencing in the entire operation around the, around the forested areas. Now, one change that did come about as the planning board hearing was that the fencing that was originally proposed along this southern property line here has been moved to this, this gap in the trees here, to the choke point, to get a little bit further away from the residents at 2070 Hildebrand Road. So if we take a look in the vicinity, we can see most of the area around there is either forested or with a couple of residents around. And then going a little bit stretch view here, you can see there are some commercial uses in the area as well. Most of those are concentrated either here at Barber Junction, and there's a, there's one located along the intersection with Hildebrand as well. And that becomes a little bit more apparent when we take a look at the zoning in the area, where most of the CBI is currently occupied here at Barber Junction with active uses. And then both of these spots of CBI here have active uses on them as well. So as far as potential impacts on facilities, Statesville Boulevard has a design capacity of 35,000 vehicles a day, and currently, as of 2019, it's at about 13,000. Guts Land Clearing, which is the company proposing to move out there, currently employs eight people, and they would generate about two trips when they come in in the morning, and then two trips each when they come back from their job sites at the end of the day. And they've already received a driveway permit from the NC DRT. And then as far as other utilities, they're going to get their water from the SRU, and they will have an onsite septic system. Back in the November planning board meeting, we had one person, two people come to speak in opposition, and they were the residents of 27 Hildebrand, and they had some concerns with noise and with the location of that original fence, and the planning board addressed that with kind of the mutually agreed upon condition of moving that fence, and they had the idea that the existing tree coverage would be enough of a noise barrier to prevent any kind of noise blow over onto the nearby residences. And then after that discussion, they approved the two statements here, the statement of reasonableness and the statement of consistency, and then approved the request with the condition that they move that fence to the choke point in the forest. But as far as comments, since this is a conditional district request, we can only look at the use that's being requested here, and that you can have other mutually agreed upon conditions with the applicant. And then procedurally, we'll have a statement of reasonableness, consistency, and then approve to another table the request. And then if you have any questions, both me and the applicant are here.
Any questions for Aaron? If we don't have any, then close by, and if the applicant's here, would the applicant like to say anything?
Hi, my name is Mitch Wilson, and my partner is Kirk On Sharp, with the owners of Guts Land Clearing, and we spent a significant amount of time trying to find a piece of property that we thought would work for us so that we could remain in Rowan County. As you guys are aware, there's, there's a lot of real estate that's out there, but it comes with lots of different conditions, or it's in areas that wouldn't be as conducive to have a commercial operation. So when we found this, this piece of property, we were excited about whether we're going to stay in Rowan County. A lot of the workers that work with us are from the Rowan County area, so it didn't make any sense to kind of relocate the business. So we are, at this point, proceeding down the path towards getting zoning, and we, we have finished the necessary, the necessary work that was done by an environmental consultant and Eric Bailey, who's done some septic testing out there, and as soon as we get zoning approval, it's understanding that once the property is zoned, that then we can formally submit that to Rowan County for a septic application, and so we're hoping that will happen in short order. So happy to answer any other questions that you guys might have about the, about the land use.
Any questions?
Very straightforward.
Thank you.
I want to get that guy's card on the way.
I was going to say, you need to talk to him, Mitch Purman.
We're jumping on you already, aren't we? Why not? Happy New Year. Happy New Year. All right. So what we'll do now is we're going to open the floor for a public comment, and anyone, including our friend back here that would like to speak, feel free to come forward, give us your name and your address for the record, and then, so come on up. And welcome.
Thank you, sir.
I'm James Lambert. I'm the 2050 Hildebrand Road on the backside of this property here. I have concerns over the septic system, because a lot of people know anything around Barber Junction has a terrible time putting the septic tank in there. Now, I understand they've hired an engineer or somebody that's going to come out and look at it or do all that kind of stuff. I don't know about that. I do have, I've been there 40 years, so I know what the land is. And I have a concern about the wash off. One of the gentlemen's, I think, in there here said that washing equipment off wouldn't be a problem. Well, we've got about 10 residents within a quarter of a mile of this, and all that goes in the ground. We all use wells. We don't have city water. So I think that's something needs to be considered, too, if they're going to wash your equipment. You know, oil, grease, all that's going to go somewhere. It's going to go in the ground. So I have concern about that. Now, they did say they was going to move the fence on us. That's great, where they talked about the fence. I would like to see them put a row of trees on the backside of the fence. I think I can tell them or talk to them if that's willing for them, so they block some of the view, so we don't have to step out our back door and look at it all day. Other than that, I think, you know, we're going to be fine, but we'll try to be neighbors, because I'm sure it's going to happen anyway, but there's a few things we'd like to, the concern is the water issue and privacy, a little more privacy.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Aaron, how wide is that choke point? Any idea?
Oh, see, I could probably do something.
And I'm, I'm asking that to ask the applicants if, if that would be acceptable to you to put some Leyland Cypress or something on the other side of the fence?
Less than 100 yards.
Yeah, it's less than 100 feet wide.
Less than 100 feet? Just my thought. Commissioners, maybe the applicant, if you'd, if you'd come forward again, is that?
I think, don't need to be at the mark upon it.
Yeah, come on, yeah, come on up so we can get you on the record. I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
I don't think we would, I don't think we'd be opposed to, to potentially looking at planting some, some trees or some shrubs there. The only issue there is that if there's a permanent row of trees behind that fence, it automatically excludes us from having access to that, to that property, this back there, and that is, that is part of the property that we'd be purchasing. So if it's a fence, you could put a gate in there, you know, if it's a row of Leyland Cypress, you're not going to have that opportunity, and within five or six years, you're going to have grown up so big that if we don't have access to that, we're either going to have to cut up the trees or figure out another way to, to get back there.
Well, you, you will be putting a gate in there, right?
Yes.
Okay. Could you put trees in front of everything but the gate?
And I'm, I think that's, I think that's fine, yes.
Or we can put it closer, the trees closer to the property line.
Yeah.
And that may be the solution, is to actually put the trees back at the back property line as opposed to up by the fence.
Where you propose to put the gate, that's down that stretch, down there into the little gap we were talking about. My idea is from the view, this side of the gap to the property line on the backside, the old field back on the back. Where you're not going to have a fence there, according to what you're saying.
Well, originally, we had proposed to put the fence all the way down in and turn it across the back property line.
And then that stretch, I think, took it in at a big foot bend, you know, crack of radio wire, but just a row of trees right there on that path, each side of the property line, that's over there.
So not after that, set up the property?
Yeah, on the east side, through the little field that's in the back, back there.
Yeah, and we could, we could go in and plant, if you, if you look at the map, and I have the map in front of me, but it's that back property line that was originally, Shane, has been fenced, and then we moved it, then we moved it to the choke point. So I think what you're talking about is going back to the back property line and, and planting the trees along that line?
The very east corner of the property line, just to where you're putting the gate.
Okay.
Through that open field right there.
So it's a little bit more than 100 feet in that?
That's, that's...
No, 100 yards. No, less than 100 yards.
Yeah, it's probably 300 feet.
Yeah.
I mean, my preference would be not to do that, but if that's what it takes to get it approved, we'll, we'll consider doing that.
Trying to work out a neighborly, you know, it is a new year.
Thankfully.
Yes. Will that work for y'all?
Yeah, I think we should be able to.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's...
If we all guarantee that they're fully grown up.
Yeah.
It might take, it might take a while for them to grow up, but we'll get some.
Well, mine's not seeing, they leave my grand kids, won't have to update.
There you go.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right. All right, is it, is it anyone else here to, to speak on this item? Or if not, then we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion on this? All right, if not, then I'll offer up a statement of reasonableness, unless someone else has it ready or available.
I don't have it.
Okay. Statement of reasonableness, I make this in the form of a motion. The request to rezone the property located at 8200 block of Statesville Boulevard, further identified as tax parcel 751 dash oh three eight, from rural residential to CBI with a conditional district is consistent with a Western land use plan. There are other businesses along the corridor zone CBI. There will be no major impact to school, utilities, or roads. I need a second.
Second.
All right, Craig, and then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Statement of consistency in the form of a motion, the rezoning is consistent with other properties along Statesville Boulevard. It is a conditional district, only allowing a specific use. Is there a second?
Seven.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to go ahead and put the language in about the shake, the screening?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to, yeah, let's, let's get the consistency. Yeah, so we got a motion.
Judy, second.
Judy, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then the planning board, they request the condition, the fencing along the property line with parcel 751 oh three seven be moved to the narrow gap in the forest, and then also the applicants agreed to put a tree line along, how do we describe that?
The property line, one.
Along the property line? Is that it? Okay, along the property line. So with those conditions, then I make a motion that we approve Z zero seven dash two zero.
So moved.
All right, Craig, in a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Feel free to stay all night. All right, the next one is a public hearing for Z zero six dash two zero, and Shane, welcome, Shane. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Hello, there's Jim.
All right, make sure I do this right, screen.
Welcome, Jim.
Thank you, sir.
We cut him off. Just like that, we cut him off.
All right, so, excuse me, this request here is from Mr. Wu for his property at the 5900 block of Wildwood Road out towards the East Spencer area, and take a look at the site. I can get the vicinity map here, something working. All right. So you look at the map, you see Oding and Church, we're just outside of the East Spencer zoning jurisdiction. The outlined area in blue is the subject parcel oh fifty-five oh oh seven. We're speaking of a portion of that, which is outlined in red, and the zoning is green, representing manufactured home park. So if you look a little closer at this map, maybe a little, still difficult to tell, but this area here in green used to contain a manufactured home park that, my cursor's not on there, but you can see the crosshatch area, and in 2003, that represented the transition away from an old property. Honestly, from the county's perspective and the state, it was, it was quite a, a site, and ultimately, working with the property owner, it was closed. So after all these years, we're looking back and working with the owner to get that designation removed, he has some interests that fall in line with the RA designation, so it just made the most sense, and the family petitioned an application in, so we're here this afternoon for that. A little hard to capture a site that large, there's not really any improvements per se to look at, but I think about 15 years ago, the site was timbered, so there's some additional tree growth here, and from this pictometry image here, again, the MHPs outlined in yellow in this case, and from a couple of street view images, this is on the south side, and the property's subject is on the right, and just past this driveway here, so it's on both sides of the road, and from the northern aspect looking south, the site is on both sides of the road. There's my cursor. Thanks, April. On both sides of the road, looking south. All right, so again, the RA district is the light yellow, so we'll be matching that. We won't need a statement of reasonableness for that reason, we're matching the existing surrounding zoning. It's hard to tell that there is some East Spencer ETJ, this tan color here, and also this is town limits, the Aldi distribution up there, I believe it's one of the 85 ED designations. Pretty simple to compare the two districts. MHP is very exclusive, it only allows residential, and more specifically, those within sort of like a park setting. So the RA district is the common uses that we see most every request before the board. From a land use perspective, we're in Area Two here, it is within a hollow corridor overlay due to the proximity of 85, but in speaking with SRU, it's quite a distance away from many utility service areas, major impediment being the creek and topo change from Aldi, so if anything were to occur over here, it'd be a number of years down the road, and it's a pretty good sized site, but a lot of flood plain, some topo challenges there, too, and it's 60 some acres, and you take out those, it's, you know, it, maybe at some point, it may come back to the board one day for that, but for right now, RA seems reasonable. As with our typical applications, we send out letters and post signs on the property. Received one call only from an interested party about, you know, just what's going on the area, nothing specific to this, and the planning board did recommend approval unanimously. You have on the screen, and also on page four, the staff report, the statement of consistency. As with the previous application, this one and the next, we do have the 24 hour wait and additional vote on that, but any questions on this one?
Go back to you, yeah. So what is the rest of it zoned? Is it RA?
Yes, sir.
So this is just making it all RA, then?
Correct, it does. The creek area, the northern side is actually East Spencer zoning jurisdiction. I believe that may be an ED designation.
Anything else for Shane? All right, don't go anywhere. So is, is the applicant here? Shane, do you know?
No, sir.
No? Okay. The applicant's here. Not here. All right, we'll open the floor and conduct a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to come speak on this topic of Z zero six dash two zero? April, anyone?
Anyone wishing to speak at this time, use the raise your hand feature or the star nine on your phone if you're joining by telephone.
All right, doesn't appear that we have anyone, so we'll close the public hearing. And first off, are there any, are there any comments, commissioners? If not, I'll offer, is there anything from anyone? All right, I'll offer a statement of consistency. As a motion, Z zero six dash two zero is consistent with the Eastern Land Use Plan based on the following. The request is consistent with the Eastern Land Use Plan. The request will allow residential uses in the rural agriculture district with appropriate regulations such as single family dwellings, large tracts, and agricultural fields. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Craig, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have a motion to approve Z zero six dash two zero.
So moved.
All right, Craig, motion. Judy, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any questions? Jim, hey, can you hear us?
I can hear you well. I hope you can hear me.
We're not hearing you.
You're muted, buddy.
Are you muted?
Nope.
That bar growing, I was hit again.
Yeah. All right, just give us thumbs up or thumbs down when you vote, okay?
That's my phone.
All right, next one for Shane, public hearing, Z zero five dash two zero, Steinman Storage. Shane?
So this request is a little different. We've had several of these before, but we had a former conditional district that was approved in 2008, excuse me, and at that time, the plan called for four total structures that weren't many storage. You see, they're larger storage, but a lot of stuff that you're, the lake... You see the larger storage, but a lot of stuff that you're, the lake needs, the boats and trails and whatnot, all of these, et cetera. But at that time, Dr. Webb, I believe, got it approved, and then recently sold it. And Dr. Steinman wasn't aware of the stipulation, and I'm not sure if the old site plan was passed along or whatnot, but been working with him, been great to work with, Bob Glover and those folks, but they do need to amend their plan. And the site plan submitted, we'll get to in a minute, is the, really the purpose, the district is still CBI/CD, it's just amended and recognizing that new, new plan. So the, the property we're speaking of is 4290 Long Ferry Road. If you look here, it's just past Crawford and Goodman Lake Road on the north side. And from the 98, or excuse me, 18 area photo, you see the two structures current and the fencing around the site. And from there, it's gonna be, you can kind of see it on your screen, here's the new buildings proposed, totaling 22,000 square feet. And an expansion in the rear, they have some outside storage too, for some of those things that I guess won't go in the building or a different price point, but the expansion would continue that area and put some of those things within the back. You see the screening here that was required from the previous approval and planned, and one of the things we talked with the applicant about, not really sure, but someone thought, you know, maybe it's best to prune those, and they're individual shrubs, and they don't provide a opaque blockage. So we did talk with them about, let's let those things grow together to form that type A screen that's required in the ordinance. So at that point, with no pruning, I'm assuming the plant will grow back together in this intended six-foot vegetation hedge. So that's really the main comment from this, it's a very similar plan to the previous one. And at this point, there's no other plans for a future expansion, but they do know they'd have to come back to the board if they decide to do so. Looking at the surrounding zoning, you see some other reds that we've adopted in the past, but kind of consistent, we'll talk about the land use plan. Comments on that too shortly, but looking at the site, looking back towards Goodman Lake Road to the west, see the fenced area here, or the fence and then the vegetation here, and looking back east. And across the road is a series of houses, there's the, Eleanor Potts has quite a bit of land at a manufactured home park, and then there's some road frontage homes and a farm behind it. And back towards on Buckshot Trail adjacent, manufactured home subdivision, you're looking at the existing structures, and then the expansion will be beyond these cedars here. And a few more to look at, there is on Bernard Lane, there's some things on the top left, yeah, there's my cursor. On the top left, to the left side of this, you see a series of structures. Those predated, ED predated zoning are standard that required a conditional use permit for the residential storage facility. It may look a little odd to some folks that were going through this and they're still zoned RA, but there's some history there. And 4240 Costa Residence, just to the, the left there on the Goodman Lake side. And then here's some additional homes we talked about along Goodman Lake Road. This is also an area two, as the previous request. Few things that can be considered, expansion of existing business that minimize conflict, that's something that the plan talks about, that that's encouraged. Also, future plans. I think the whole notion here is you got small lots on the lake, and people want to protect their view, may not have enough room for storage, so maybe this kind of serves that need. And it's a great location, being at Goodman Lake Road too, serving even Sunset Point, Pebble Point, and all those areas. On this one, didn't receive any calls, same thing, letters, sign, add in the Salisbury Post. Unanimous approval, statement of consistency is on page four, which you see on the screen here. And also, this one does have reasonableness, and here it is on the screen too. Any questions?
All right, thank you Shane. I'll hit him up with that one later. All right, will, is the applicant here? Shane, do you know? Anyone want to speak?
No.
Okay. All right, then once again, we'll open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone that's here? Or April, anyone online on Zoom that would like to speak on this topic?
Like to invite anybody joining us remotely, if you'd like to use the raise your hand feature or star nine of joining us by phone.
All right, not seeing any, we'll close the public comment. And again, I'll offer up a statement of consistency and reasonableness as a motion. Make the motion that Z05-20 is consistent with the eastern land use plan based on the following. The plan was approved in 2008 as CBI/CD. The owner-applicant are requesting the same type of use. And so, do we have a second?
Second.
Craig, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Statement of reasonableness in accordance with section, and I make this in the form of a motion, in accordance with section 21362J of the Rowan County zoning ordinance, and after due consideration, Z05-20 is reasonable and in the public interest based on the following. The request is consistent with the eastern land use plan. The request will service residents, residences in the area. Do we have a second?
Second.
Craig, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then Shane, do we need to make a condition to allow the planted holly shrubs to grow and form a continuous hedgerow?
No, sir, that's an ordinance requirement, so I make that in the...
Okay. All right, then, do we have a motion to approve Z05-20?
So moved.
Second.
Craig and Judy, motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you Shane. All right, item number six, County Manager Church. Or do we just?
I'm pulling, I'm pulling it up.
Okay.
This is, this is a public hearing on the consolidation of human services, of a human services agency. It was noticed in the newspaper. The public notice is for the Rowan County Board of Commissioners to hold a public hearing on January 4th today at 3:00 PM regarding the creation of a consolidated human services agencies. On or after this date, the Board of Commissioners may exercise the power and authority contained in the North Carolina General Statute 153A77 to assume the power, responsibility, and duties of a consolidated human services agency by taking the following steps. One, create a consolidated human services agency that has authority to carry out the functions of the local health department and the Department of Veteran Services. Two, create a human services board having the powers conferred by the North Carolina General Statute 153A77C, and further assume all power, responsibilities, and duties of said consolidated human services board pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Three, create an advisory committee consistent with the membership described in North Carolina General Statute 13835. And four, consolidate the provisions of human services in Rowan County under the direct control of a human services director that will be appointed and supervised by the county manager in accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 153A77B. This is a public hearing, there doesn't have to be any action after the public hearing, it's just to receive comments from the public on the creation of a consolidated human services agency.
All right, so as Manager Church said, we don't intend to have a vote today. We just, this is part of legal process that we want to hear from the public about their interests and concerns in creation of a consolidated human services agency. So I'll gavel us in here in a second, but anyone that would like to get up and come speak, again, just state your name, your address for the record. And we actually didn't set any rules of timing on this, so we'll just be kind of flexible. So we'll begin the process and open the floor for a public hearing. Is anyone, would anyone like to speak? Dan? Yes. Welcome.
My name is Dan Mickelson, 604 Anderson Avenue here in Salisbury. I served on the Rowan County Board of Health for nine years. I understand the strengths and the weaknesses of the Board of Health, and I'm still very interested in issues involving public health. I'm here today to caution the commissioners against changing the structure of the current system, especially during a pandemic. Now, according to yesterday's newspaper, this proposal is in response to three issues. Number one, concern about communication between the commissioners in environmental health. Number two, concern with performance at environmental health. And number three, a desire to consolidate the health department with veteran services. Now, it appears that you've already effectively dealt with the first two issues. The problem in environmental health was caused by vacancy of critical staff position and an inability to recruit qualified candidates. So the commissioners made the difficult decision to allocate additional financial resources to the issue, and the vacancy was filled. And according to the minutes of the October Board of Health meeting, policies and procedures have been reviewed and adjusted, and measures are rapidly improving. And it appears on your agenda that you'll be hearing a report following this about that very issue. So I say good job to everyone involved with that problem. The Board of Commissioners is a political body, and you serve at your best making difficult decisions like allocating the county's limited financial resources. The Board of Health is a professional body, and they serve their best overseeing the complex details involved in public health. And as you're aware, eight out of the 11 members of the Board of Health are professionals in specific fields established by state statute. Well, we're in a pandemic. The health department has already spent over 11,000 hours responding to the pandemic, and in the next six months, the health department will be responsible for administering probably 200,000 COVID-19 vaccinations. I can't think of anyone in Rowan County I would trust more to implement this effort than Mia Oliver, overseen by a Board of Health professionals. For the life of me, I cannot see how consolidating veteran services with the health department will help her to do that. If it's not broke, don't fix it. And you've already fixed what was broke, so you can stop fixing things while you're still ahead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan.
We'd like to extend an invitation to our remote participants. If you'd like to use the raise your hand feature within the Zoom application or star nine of joining by phone.
We clear? All right, we have no one else that has come in on Zooms, we'll close...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we'll close public comment.
Just, just for the commissioners' education, there will be a number of email letters coming in to us all on this issue.
Well, believe it or not, I don't have anything to say about this right now. I know you're happy to hear that. It's my New Year's resolution not to talk as much. So the purpose of this was to hear comment from the public, we've done that. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? No?
No, I just want to say that...
All right, we'll move on to the...
I was about to say...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, and I don't know, you know, that we're ever going to do this, but under this plan, you would, the veteran services would not report to the health director, would report to the director of the services agency, so the health department wouldn't have any association with the veteran services.
All right, we'll move on to item number seven, and environmental health biweekly report. Thanks for being here. Welcome, Happy New Year. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Happy New Year. Everybody had a great holiday. All right, as you can see, we are focusing on the last report you have here of December 7th through December the 18th. We are slowly, well, progressively getting everything down. Our application's always generally slow in the, in the month of December due to holidays. It's, we've got the, the New Year, Christmas time, a lot of, a lot of people vacationing during that timeframe. I want to bring a note, everything's pretty consistent on level with most other reporting, with the well inspections at 15, completed, well requests, 13, we had none waiting. We had evaluation, site evaluations at 62, evaluations requested, 24, and you'll see the asterix, double asterix beside the 16. We gave 20 applications to contracted soil scientists, so they are going to take, control those 20. They had a month backlog themselves, so we gave it to them second week of November, December, somewhere around the 14th, 13th, 14th, we contracted those over. They're expected to get to them the 14th to 16th of January, but recently today, they said they're going to try to move things up, so they're, they're getting caught up with things, they're going to push those through. To ensure that the clients did not wait, we actually pulled those from the most recent into the list, so the ones that were already there for three or four weeks weren't going to wait another four weeks. And then that would ultimately be an eight-week turnaround for them. So we actually took the bones on the bottom, knowing this delay that they were gracious enough to tell us about, and was able to keep this delay similar, similar four, four weeks spanned. So there shouldn't be any delays on that one. The improvement permits completed, was it 19? Improvement permit requested, was it 24? And again, the IPs or improvement permits waiting at 16. Existing system inspections, we don't get a lot of those. We had zero in that timeframe. We had completed, we had two come in, we hadn't gotten two yet. Nitrite, nitrate samples, again, these are water samples from new well applications. When you drill a well, we take a kit of that. Part of the kit that we take is inorganic, bacteriological, and nitrite-nitrate. So I've included those in that. We have not received any pesticide samples or requests. I want to also include final inspections, how we can scroll to the, there we go, to the left. So in the second category down, we have the final inspections. So we had 15, that is how many new septic systems went in the ground that we had to go out and inspect as the installers install them. Well grouts, these would be new wells that were drilled, that we had to go out and inspect the well grouts on to make sure they were properly grounded. Complaints visited, we, actually, this was mostly done by one individual, so he had spent much of his time doing nothing but complaints that, that two weeks spanned. And complaint rating, we do need to, we're focusing on those next, those are hard to get to because they can, they, they come in so readily, every time it rains, we continuously get some kind of, you know, my neighbor's sewage running across and it may be rainwater. So we spent a lot of hours visiting these, it turned out to be not a lot. Some of them are very, very needed, though. Individual applications, you see the 14 are from individuals within the county, and then builder applications. This number is so high as six of these applications were... This number is so high as six of these applications were misplaced with former employees that were there that were not checked up on by the applicant and came in that week and wondered where they were. We ended up finding them. They had not been addressed. So I'm still trying to clean up some things.
Former meaning old former?
Yes.
Not new former?
No, 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 this was one, no, old former. Yeah, so I'm still trying to clean up some, some issues there. They're not as, as relevant as they were. I guess they're not, they're not as prevalent as they were, so it's, it's a little bit, and you guys have probably noticed, you probably have less complaints. Probably haven't seen as many of those lately. So at this timeframe, we were actually at a full week backlog. As of Thursday of last week before the holiday, we actually had a three-week, two-day backlog. So three weeks and two days. So we're, we're getting there. It's, it's a challenge, but we're getting there. All right, so with each individual number, down to the next, the numbers of soil sites visited each day. It would fall in the block again through the 7th through the 18th. They're fairly consistent, Inspector One, I can tell you, they're, they're working on the authorization. They actually spent the last two weeks, the week of Christmas, and last week getting authorized. So we're just waiting on the state to write the paper now, because they finished it up, spent four days with the state, regional soil scientists, between taking the exam and three field days. So pretty much his weeks of, of last two weeks were taken up by state requirements and his authorization. But once we got him authorized, which we're hoping to get this week, we'll be good to go on him, and he'll be able to, you'll see more numbers of him coming in.
Adrian, is that Tucker Osborne?
Also known as Inspector One, yes. That'd be Tucker Osborne. So he's good, he's, he's now on his way now. That should be clarified last of his authorizations that he has to receive, to, to get him out in the field and doing septic and soil evaluations. The rest of them are pretty consistent. As you know, some of these numbers are fairly consistent. We had some vacations during that timeframe. Let's see here, Inspector Three. Okay, that's, that's not quite all the information. You scrolled down. Can I scroll down? Oh, yeah, I can.
So these inspectors that are on your spreadsheet, these are employees of the county, correct?
So what?
The P inspectors that are listed, one, two, three, five, up to five, those are all Rowan County employees?
Yes, ma'am, yes. Yes, I do, I, yes, that's all in county employee inspectors in our office, myself included, which I am Inspector Number Five.
Okay.
So we've got two of them figured out where they belong. So, and I can name them if you want me to. I just try to keep the anonymous some...
I was just wondering about Tucker since his grandmother just died.
Yes, that is unfortunate, and I'm, I'm sorry to, sorry to hear that. That is an unfortunate situation. So, yeah, he was able to get everything, most of his authorization done. Tucker is very much a champion when it comes to that, because we had no admin staff in our office last Thursday, and Tucker was actually going to take half the day off, and he stayed to help me maintain and man the ship. So I would like another Tucker, if anybody has one. I'll take another Tucker. No? Okay. I tried. So with the rest of these numbers, they're very consistent here with each individual as they, you can actually, this is building great consistency. We did have an individual on vacation, half, Inspector Number Two, he was on vacation the week of the 14th through the 18th, so there's no numbers there. Inspector Three consistently just going to sites, and like I said, it all is pretty consistent. Zeros do generally indicate that no one's there, but you can check that against farther down with the numbers of hours worked each week. If need be, you can check, see who was there and if they were working or not working. Table number, moving through with that, the number of permits issued each day. We had a table number of permits, and we're not jumping through every single day. Inspector One had five permits, 10 permits for Inspector Two, 316, 442, but this includes all permits, meaning new septic improvement permits, authorization to construct permits, and this is over two-week span, too. So if you see that number 42, don't think he wrote 42 permits in one day. He would be something. So, but includes multiple permits. So when you want to build a house, you need both, an improvement permit and a construction authorization. You can't do one without the other. So ultimately, every septic system, you issue two permits, and then with a well, so it's three permits. So you could ultimately issue three permits per lot. So that's how you can accumulate those, and not to mention any notices of violations. If you go to a site that there was a complaint on, or you find discharging sewage, we issue what's known as a notice of violation. We give them, we put them on notice, and we give them 30 days to rectify the problem, meaning contacting us, applying for a repair permit to fix the issue. If we don't have contact within 30 days, it, it's a legal process after that, where we actually go to the magistrate's office. I'm afraid some of those are going to be coming up that we're, they're not, they're not wanting to adhere to some of the processes. Down to the number of soil and site evaluations each day, that is included in the graph above that. This just breaks down how many site evaluations were done on a daily, weekly period, biweekly period. You see Tucker has none, because that would be violating North Carolina laws. So you got Inspector Three with 10, Four with 17, or Inspector Two with 10, Four, Three with 17, Four with 31, and myself being one, because I don't get to go out in the field as much as I used to. And then hourly hours, or number of hours that folks worked. See that there? The food and lodging inspection reports, so we still have one on maternity leave, so she is not on that, and we had one that has taken a lot of vacation, so about a month worth. So you'll see inspections basically done by one individual.
When is the person on maternity leave coming back?
Monday.
Monday, great.
In that being said, we also had a resignation the week before Christmas, actually. So last week was their last week. So we have another, we have two openings. With that being said, we've also done two interviews. I did that prior to Christmas week, looking to offer a job, offer positions to both of them. I did get some information today that I'm going to follow up on before we offer one of the positions. It's kind of one of those last, out of nowhere, I got a call, a phone call from a state regional inspector, said you may want to look into a second, maybe a second look at one of them. So I'm, I'm concerned about what I was told, let's put it like that. So I'm going to look into that and get ahold of the person, have their contact that says they've worked with the individual in the past.
So our total for the fourth quarter, then, the percent completed was 10%? What does that...
It's not quite the first quarter. So the first quarter falls between October 1st through January the 1st, so that'd be the fourth quarter of the year. And the updated, next time you'll see that. If you're, the first quarter actually is 18.98%.
I was just wondering what the total was for 2020.
For 2020, I don't know. I can run that report, though. I'd be happy to provide that. I can send you an email to report it next, next reporting.
Is the, is the goal that, is the goal to inspect every restaurant once a year?
If I have the proper staff, then absolutely. Nobody else, not once a year, but they're based on quarterly, based on categories, either category one, two, three, or four. So depending on that restaurant, it's going to depend on how many times they need to be inspected. A category three will be inspected once per quarter. So I would like all four inspections. If I get fully staffed or can get fully staffed and with a knowledgeable team, I would love to be able to get 100% overall.
Our inspections before you arrived, I think, were around 40-some percent?
I found an email that showed us at 57%, but that's still, I'm not okay with that. I'm not even close to being okay with that.
Discussion with the Health Board is that we want to see 100% like other counties around us.
But I want a quality 100% because you can walk in a restaurant and have a full category four inspection done in 15 minutes, but you did not do an inspection nor protected public health. That's what we've got to worry with, is some of these small counties have this 100% requirement. So you're, you're in a balancing act, you know, to get that 100% and you only have two staff, but you need to do 1,000 inspections, it's not possible. After you go to verifications and you have issues that you got to go back and check, they're, they're pushing them through. So it's a, it's a balancing act here. I would rather, and as I said, I accept this, but I'd rather accept 85% thorough inspections than I would 100 partially halfway-done inspections, just for public health and protection of everyone standing here and, you know, hold it.
Yeah, because all we need is outbreak salmonella and...
On top of a pandemic, that would be great. That would be terrible. That would be terrible. I did also want to update everybody, we have our GPS units, we're working with IT to get everything downloaded, and that's a process in itself. Every computer has to have its own program. We ought to have software to make these things run. We're trying, we're working within GIS department to get the GIS software. I believe it's been ordered, we just got to get with and get it put all together. We're meeting with Columbus hopefully in the next couple of weeks, hopefully this week and early next week, to figure out how to get all this stuff in, and then we'll be moving our, on our way with that as well. So they look nice.
So Adrian, when you, when you look at our contract folks and what they can accomplish, and then the upgraded speed with the GPS systems, then will we be able to not continue with the consultants then and, and be able to keep up?
Yes, actually, I'm, I'm really hopeful on that now, because after that 20 pulled out, we're, we're very manageable. As of also that same date of last Thursday, we had a total of 14 applications waiting. Yes, so 14, and I, I had a large majority of that came in on Tuesday. I guess everybody was, over the holidays, just thinking about what we're going to do on that upcoming Tuesday, or, so a lot of that came in all at one time. So that gets us into, I think, a very manageable position with the GPS, get those things up and running, 14 applications out. I really, we're going to start focusing on the complaints. We've got a lot of complaints and a lot of valid complaints that we need to address. One of them I've been trying to address, and I'm kind of, you know, you get stuck in a position of there's a, a legal recourse and a due process. I'd really like to just go knock on the door and, you know, figure out a better way, but I've tried to go through all the due process, kind of even to the point of contacting the Sheriff's Department on some of that. Had planning, zoning development out there, one of their people, to see if there's anything we can do about that. Turns out it's in a different ETJ, so I got to get ahold of that ETJ or that planning board. So I'm, I'm making strides, but I don't see why people shouldn't live with sewage running down the street.
So when everybody's, like, say, six months down away from here, six months from here, how close to one week permits do you think we'll get?
I'm hoping pretty close. We better not. I was doubtful of that, but I mean, the way is, you know, now we get the spring boom, so there's, it's going to fluctuate. Right now, holidays, it tends to slow down, because most people are, they're on vacation, they take a lot of end-of-year vacations, or they're taking time off for family and holiday vacation, but it slows down. So we're in a typical low, winter low. It's also about the worst time, you could probably build a house with grading and the weather that wants to rain an inch or so every three or four days, and it doesn't evaporate. So we get a low in the spring, we're going to hit a mid-spring, new creations and beginnings, boom, and we'll have a midsummer low. Typical midsummer, right before you go back, everyone, the kids go back to school, you kind of prioritize it, and then we'll hit a fall boom. It's been that way for 15 years, so just depends on how big.
I just want to say from my perspective again, and mine's not always right, I accept that, but, but I know regardless of what the business is, that there are kind of standard, businesses have different standards of what they expect from the perspective of production, whether it's a framer, whether it's construction, whether it's, you name the business, the, the owner of the business is staffing based on need. And he, he or she knows that, again, if they're making widgets or they're performing environmental health services jobs. To, to me, this is a math issue, and, and while, you know, we, we like to complain that government sure likes to grow, none of us here want to see government continue to grow, but we also have a goal of being the best in these areas. So I'll put it out there again. I, I, I don't want personnel to be, I hate to use the word excuse, because you're not making excuses. I, I don't want, I don't want personnel to be an excuse for us to not have the best service in this region. So, and, and again, as supervisors, directors, you all know how many, because that's your job and you're in that industry, you know how many per day on average. We know some days they'll do two, some days they'll do 10. You know, we, we get that. But when we look and see what we've got in front of us, and as growth begins to really take off in Rowan County, and I fully believe we are right on the cusp of that, come to us, because we want to make sure in these areas of development, this is the front door to our community, and builders and developers talk. And this is why we're having these conversations, because they were talking, and we get a bad reputation, and that's the worst thing that could happen with us, and it makes your job tough, makes Rod Kreider's job tough, it makes our job tough, because we're taking the calls. So just continuing to work together with you is what our promise is, to make sure that when we get to the point where we have to invest additionally in order to get to the level of service that would put us on top, that we have those discussions and us not just say, and you're not, you're not saying that, but we just don't say, I don't, I don't, folks, we need to have, we need to have a plan, or a continuous plan of getting better. Posted in that, and the director will let us know when we're at that, we have these same conversations with other departments. We're in good shape.
Well, I do appreciate, appreciate that, and, you know, we've made a lot of changes right now, and I'm absorbing and changing and making a lot of changes right now, so I want to allow some of those changes to actually implement themselves before, you know, before we jump to the next change.
And we feel the same way.
Yeah.
We, we understand that, and we're not, it's not lost on us.
I appreciate that, and I do promise you guys that if we expand our office and expand government by one person, I will not allow them to take over Rowan County. So I'll promise you that, we'll, we'll stop, I'll stop a hostile takeover with that.
All stealing each other's sheep.
Yeah. I mean, I'll steal some other sheep from another county.
Adrian, I noticed on the Cabarrus website that they're still looking for a replacement for the guy that we did steal.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, we polled the neighboring county, Davidson County, and we got theirs and see where they are with their backlog, and I don't see how they are, but...
All right, Adrian, we appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Commissioners, thank you.
Have a great year. All right, we'll move on. Is that it for this one? All right, we'll move on to agenda item number eight. This is a replacement. This is a new item, and so let me just preface this by saying that this has to do with the county's business grant program that we just closed out. To the community, we would say, you know, we've, we've had a heart for doing this, all the commissioners, and again, we thank the staff for the hard work they put in this, because this has not been easy, and we, we had to hire an outside firm really to, to manage the technical side of this. And so there's a lot of systems that are involved, and there's a lot of folks involved. And so we'll, we'll let the community know that there were 16 applications that fell through the cracks, and we were alerted to that last... and we were alerted to that last week, and we've been doing some investigation in that, Randy Cress has been digging deep into that, and we just gotta, we, again, building this from the bottom up for the first time, we lost sixteen applications. So we are working through that now with our consultant, with our contract consultant, we're working with those sixteen applicants right now to determine which of those will qualify. The good news is, since the federal government passed the rules that would allow us to pay those care funds beyond, am I speaking right? Okay, I'm not making stuff up this time. So beyond the December thirty-first date, we're just, we're thankful that that happened so that we can go back and take a look at these that had their applications in. We don't know how this happened, they don't know how this happened, but we're thankful that someone stepped up and said something, and Randy is bird dogging it, and so we really appreciate it. So, so the recommendation here is for the Board of Commissioners to add an addendum to the current small business grant program to allow McGill Associates to review and process these sixteen applications per the existing eligibility requirements, based on the December seventeenth, 2020 revision that we had done to the Small Business Grant Program. Given the new dates of the notification for these applicants, their end dates for providing documentation to McGill Associates will be January twenty-second, 2021 at 5:00 PM. This allows the same eighteen-day period as the original group of applicants received, and then checks to those who qualify will be issued to applicants in this batch based on eligibility as determined, with an overall deadline for checks to be issued by February fourth, 2021. So, little confession that we have, and I'm glad we found this out, and we're gonna work through this, and just thankful that that date was extended by the federal government to use those CARES Act dollars. So we'll need, I'll make that as a motion, recommendation, Craig seconds it, any other discussion on this?
Yes, sir, I'd like to ask the county manager, what are we doing to contact these sixteen applicants?
McGill should start contacting them after.
So this is still gonna go through McGill?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Randy, thank you, Aaron, Jim. Valerie Steele, award bid for construction phase of a NCDOT grant for glide slope replacement. Welcome, good to see you.
Good afternoon.
Wow, Andy, and Andy's in the back with our civil engineering group.
So if you have questions, save them for Andy.
Smart guy in the back.
That's what he thinks. So this is for the glide slope replacement, don't get my arrows. April, the arrows aren't working. It's not doing anything. So in August of 2018, NCDOT awarded the grant funding for this, the grant monies are in place, including the local match for this project. In November of 2020, the design phase was completed, we held our pre-bid conference on the sixteenth, and then in December, we had our bidding process, which included two bids, the first one, we did not receive enough, we did have multiple site visits and lots of questions that were answered on the fifteenth, I believe it was two o'clock, we opened the bids. Just quickly, the instrument landing system, or ILS, is what's used by pilots to come into the airport when there's no visibility. The glide slope is a portion of this, which provides vertical guidance, pilots use radar in order to come into the airport, as they're coming in, the aircraft will pick up that glide slope and help them come in on the correct vertical and horizontal planes. Typically, in a higher-end aircraft, you would see something like this, and it will suggest the conditions you need to make, how you need to move the aircraft in order to what's called fly to the needle, so you can see the localizer and glide slope, and the green area on the glide slope is where you'd wanna be, and this project is to replace a portion of the glide slope. This is the area at the end of the runway, where you can kinda see what looks like a C or an L shape, that's the service road, and then at the end of the service road is where all the glide slope mechanics and our current shed are located. The base bid was put out, there was also an alternate bid one, and alternate bid two, they were for the antenna, essentially was alternate one, and then all of the cabling was alternative two, both are extremely cost prohibitive, with the current funding we have, we can go back, ask for an additional grant, but not at this time, DOT has already said, what you've got is what you can use right now, we'd have to do a whole nother process to get more funding. So this is the base bid that came back, the one that we received, six hundred and one plus some, it's already above what we have left in our budget, currently, we approximately have five thirty-five remaining that we can spend, we had a discussion over it and included DOT in this, if we remove the service road, the actual paved portion, it will put us under budget, and there's not really a need to have that service road, so that would deduct items four, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven from the bid, reducing it by one hundred and ten, one ninety-seven oh five, for a current contract amount of four ninety-one, one dollar and twenty-eight cents. So the next steps for us, Andy and myself, would be to determine start and end dates after we receive approval, and provide them with written notice, there'll be a separate contract required for quality assurance, and the resident project representative, that's a requirement of DOT and DOA, and that is a engineering type of inspection, it's not something I can inspect, I do my own, but this is a requirement under the grant and under the DOT. So my request or recommendation today is to please award the bid to J.D. Goodrum, number two, approve the modification, which is provided in the attached draft contract, and that modification was removing the service road, and then authorize the county manager to enter the contract as presented, not to exceed the amount of four ninety-one, one dollar and twenty-eight cents. And if you have questions, we'll do our best.
What was the cabling that you said was cost prohibitive?
The cabling would be everything underground that goes from the shed out to the other units, and then the antennas are actually, one is on the airport, and then you have a midpoint and a further out, and those would be extremely expensive. The award was given, like I said, in 2018, and so costs have already gone up quite a bit since 2018. Also, the FAA is kind of changing the type of systems they want airports to install. For us, the current system we have, the INFIAR, is what we really need to get in place to correspond with what we already have in place, so if you change one component and it doesn't match the rest, it'll put us in a position where we can't do anything, and our system currently is, it's not failing, but it's limping, anytime it has an issue or needs repair, they're going to salvage yards, finding out if any airports have things laying around, it's not, it's not a system that's easily repairable at this point in time. If we lose it, obviously, that means we would lose any ability to fly at night or in any adverse weather conditions or low visibility.
Electronic portion, or is it the visible, red, green?
It's the electronic, this is the piece that talks to the plane, you're saying like the path to your precision approach indicator?
Up and down.
To tell you, and you just look at it with your eyes, and you look at your survival mode, this would be in such a bad weather, you wouldn't be able to see that, and if it actually uses the bird eye to see.
This is all the things we can't see that it's doing.
This, this system, is this an upgrade that'll move us toward capacity, or is this just patching placing what we've got? Andy, do you wanna come up?
You're welcome to come up, capacity-wise, it won't impact it positively, but if we lose it, it would impact us hugely negatively, it will, and why the DOT is in agreement with it, should put us in a position as an airport to make it at least another twenty years with an ILS, and who knows, in twenty years, they probably will not be using ILS technology, it'll move into something GPS, something we're not even able to fathom at this point in time for aviation, unless they get rid of all fossil fuels, and then it's a whole nother.
Yes, it's to replace the existing, this existing system is failing, and as she said, they're having to, you have scrap yards to find the pieces to do it, so this will fix that, so that, you know, Food Lion or any of the other corporate tenants can come in and not have to worry about, oh, wait a minute, we gotta wait for a clearer day to be able to, you know, make our business meeting.
And ideally, we would replace the cabling as well as all the antennas, but that would add at least a million probably to the project.
Really?
So, it's not an easy thing.
Seven, eight-inch cable out there to run this thing, so it's expensive.
Not a problem now, evidently, cabling, cabling.
Knock on wood, no, the cabling is not the issue right now.
Andy, what effect of taking away the service road? I know, and I appreciate you trying to get in budget, but are we doing the right thing long-term by eliminating that?
The main reason we had it in there, we put it in there, and so it was unit prices, so we knew we could take it out, but we put it in there so that, you know, if Valerie or the FAA came to do maintenance, and they came back on the runway, they wouldn't produce fog on the runway, and they wouldn't just be tracking mud on there for, you know, one of the jets to suck up any engine, that was the sole purpose of it. So it has nothing to do, nothing to do with the function of the glide slope itself.
Okay. Are you saying that we're gonna have a gravel road, or no road at all?
It would have been, it would have been asphalt, but now it would be none at all.
No road at all.
And we currently do not have a road, so.
You're in no lesser shape than you are now.
Do you know the lead time on ordering? Do you remember?
Hundred and fifty days would tell us.
I think it's about three months from the time that we authorized the project, that they have to order the equipment, and it's actually built for us.
So five hundred and twenty-three thousand on the grant, what's our portion of?
The original grant was four hundred and eighty-six thousand state funds and fifty-four thousand local funds.
Budgeted, Mr. May?
And there's a buffer built in, we should have at least fifty thousand surplus in case things come up that need to be adjusted, that we can come back and ask for funding.
I hate to harp on the same thing over and over, but I've got a little problem deleting this road, and the reason is, is because of what Andy just said, there's not gonna be any type of hard surface back to this area, and, you know, it's just been my observation through the years that things break down, and, you know, what would, just a guess, but what would it cost us to run a strip of gravel out through there? I mean, I don't know how long this road is, I got no, you know, got no information on it, so.
You could run gravel once you get outside the safety, but you don't want the gravel in the safety area.
Okay.
Between prop and jet, it'll blow that.
Well, I understand that, that's why they wanted asphalt, but.
Gravel would be a greater fog hazard than no road at all.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
The good thing is anyone going out to the glide slope has a level of aviation knowledge to understand what fog is and to not leave it behind, it would have been a nice thing to have, but it is definitely not a necessity.
Okay.
All right, so we're here to award the bid for construction phase for this glide slope, any other questions for our panel, panelists? All right, do we have a motion to award the bid for construction phase for the glide slope?
So move.
Second.
Motion, Judy, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jim. Guys, thank you. Andy, good to see you.
Good to see you, thank you all.
The other, there were two other items on the recommendation, I don't know if they require motions, and that's the modification, removing the road to the contract, and then authorizing Aaron, the county manager, to enter the contract.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You want a motion on that?
Yeah, can I, can I modify the motion to award to J.D. Goodrum, approve the contract modification of the base bid, and authorize county manager to enter the contract as presented, not to exceed the amount of four hundred and ninety-one thousand, one dollars and twenty.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, Jim.
Oh, mine.
Wake up, Greg.
Greg? So the first report you received, that was fourteen pages, that is the January NC Pro report that we need to submit by Friday, this is a list of all the expenditures for the month of December that are related to CRF. We do have summary of it, I don't know how much detail you wanna get into.
Can you just go to the last page?
Yeah, the last page shows that we spent roughly a little bit under two-point-four million dollars in the month of December. And this is a report we would need to approve it, and then would be able to submit it on Friday. Yes, usually we have it on the consent agenda. This is the month report, we send this usually every twentieth, but for this, for the month of January, they wanted it by January eighth. Yes, sir, it goes to NC Pro.
So then how does this coordinate with what you have here?
So the first, the fourteen pages is all the detail, that's every individual invoice, the second report sent is more of a summary, the top sheet is an overall summary of what we've spent for the program, and then the three pages beyond that is where we take all fourteen pages of invoices and break it down into categories.
So we've spent it down to zero now?
All the funds, the CRF funds? Yes, yes, we have, and beyond. And we can talk about it now if you'd like to, that's part of the next item.
I'll make a motion to approve the report.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the next, there's a summary page on top, this is the overall summary update for the CRF funds, as you can see, we were awarded five million, three hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars, we did add seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars of interest, so we do have a total to, a total of available funds of five million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. So this report's a little bit different than what I've shown you before, so what we have spent through December thirtieth, excluding dedicated staff, is four million, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. We do have the next five categories, our products purchased, but we have not received the invoice. the invoices yet. So some testing, technology, broadband, PP&amp;E and tests and testing kits, those equal about $250,000 that we should be able to pay here in early January. So total spend excluding staff, the dedicated staff, is $4,990,840, which leaves $329,384 remaining funds that could be used or can be offset by dedicated staff. And those dedicated staff, of course, is the folks that recorded their time, that they were allocating their time to CRF-related items. That total of $1,316,0926. So allowable expenses over available funds are $987,542.
So about $385,000 of that is our small business grant, right?
Yes, sir.
Out of the 987, so that leaves us about $600,000. Where's that? You know, when you, when you look at the dedicated staff, 1.316 million, now, these are folks that are already on our payroll.
Yes, sir.
This is an extra county spending that we went out and hired folks. An extra expense of 1.3 million. Had COVID never happened, this 1.3 million would, would have, was budgeted for just county employees that are doing their job.
Yes, sir.
The reason why it shows that there's a $987,000 difference there is 300, because we, we pulled, well, like I said earlier, we pulled $350,000 to fund, or $385,000 really, to fund that small business grant program. But it, but it just means that there are funds that we won't reimburse ourselves. We won't reimburse people in the county that are working on COVID-related issues. It's not money that we have spent over and above our budget.
That is correct. Yes, we did not exceed the 5.3 million with just CRF expenditures.
That's correct. So, you know, we want folks to understand, we could have reimbursed, the law allowed us to reimburse $1,316,926 in labor costs, direct labor costs for existing employees. Instead, what we chose to do with it are things that benefit the county, county residents, be it small business grants, be it broadband to the county that's going to help our kids and our small businesses that are in the county, PP testing, technology that is related to this, tests and testing kits. So we didn't go out and hire $1.3 million worth of new folks. We chose to spend that money in a way that will benefit Rowan County residents.
Yes, sir.
Fair to say?
Yes.
I want to make sure that the general public, not over budget here, we're just not taking this money for ourselves.
Correct. Yep. Now, you said it very well.
Best put it. Well, if I say things enough, eventually in there, there's something that. All right, all right, we don't need to vote on this at all.
No, sir, it's just for your information.
Anything else from you, Jim?
No, sir.
Any update, or is that, our next item is item 11, is there anything additionally?
That's what this was.
Okay, all right, excellent. You're in litter report, just so we can read into the record. So Rowan County has 200, or 2,498 and a half shoulder miles of roadway during the 2020 calendar year. The Department of Environmental Management here in Rowan County removed approximately 120 tons of litter and roadside debris. So we had in the first quarter, 16.4 tons of litter removed, 39 in the second quarter, 36.6 in the third, and 27, almost 28 tons of litter in the fourth, which was a total of 120 tons of litter. So just want to make that report to the folks of Rowan County. A couple of years ago, we were having so many complaints because there was so much litter, and so the county manager worked hard to come up with a way of mitigating that, and it means you're paying tax dollars to have folks pick up litter on the side of the road for either yourself or your neighbors that are just throwing stuff out. So 120 tons this year, so let's see if we can do better possibly right in 2021.
Yeah, Mr. Truman, would you just speak to the citations and cleanups, please? Because I think it's important for people to know that there's not only a reason to keep it clean, but there is a penalty if you don't.
Yeah, so they, they did issue 39 citations, and the 48, there, there were 48 dump site cleanups, meaning folks pulled their cars or their trucks over to the side of the road or somewhere and decided that that was a great place to start a new Rowan County dump site. And we disagreed, so we had to pick all that up for them and take it to the actual dump site. So 48 dump site cleanups. So that's illegal, and citations are being given, so better beware. Thank you, Judy. All right, the next item, this is from Carolyn, we need to select the NCAA voting delegate for Legislative Goals Conference on January 14th and 15th.
I'd be happy to do that.
Oh, excellent, thank you. Well, Judy, thank you. Do we have, I'm, I move that Judy be our representative. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy, for doing that, appreciate that. This one kind of snuck up on me, the planning retreat. What do y'all think about this year?
Because of the pandemic and people being isolated, our substance use problem has gone up 50%, and they're expecting that that will continue to go up.
So the question on the table is, do we want to have a board retreat this year?
I don't mind us discussing what we want to do. The thing we normally do, we bring in the facilitator and all that, I don't think, I guess we put a lot of limitations on ourselves in this budget. I would like to get some updates on that, but I don't know that. Talking about things.
I think we need to have some type of work session, but I'm with Mike, I don't think we need to go through the facilitator. I think we're kind of all on the same page of where we want to go with things, and just need to sit down and figure out how we're going to get there. And of course, you know, till we see our financial numbers, we're not going to really know what we can do anyway, so.
If I may, the board, you may want to consider having it closer to May, not May, I'm sorry, April, 1st of April. That will give us time to see more sales tax numbers, and because that's really what the planning session is going to be about, is reconciling what we budgeted and what we brought in and what we think is going to continue. I don't know that we would have a whole lot in January to add, and a couple more months might give us time to provide you some, you know, numbers that, that will mean a little more.
When we did our budget for 2021, we put a moratorium on construction capital projects because we were very worried, and rightfully so, about what impact financially COVID would have on our revenues. Be honest, at this point, we're not seeing a big impact. Most of us still are worried that there will be one. It is, is our, has our impact, have our results been impacted by CARESAC dollars, by $3.5 trillion worth of spending that trickled down to our portion of that? So are we going to escape any type of financial downturn and wrong about it? I still think something's coming, but we hope we're wrong. So I think that's a good observation, Aaron. I would support, let's, let's get four or five months under our belt of 2021. Again, we're talking about budget then, and we can, if the news is good, maybe we can go back to some capital projects and see some things.
Would you like to do it, like, say, before our first meeting in April, do it like in the morning or early afternoon on the 5th?
I'd like to, if we're doing it in April, I'd like to give it as much time.
Okay.
So could, so how about April 18th? Is that, did you say April or May?
April.
18th is a great day.
Sunday.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at 22, oh, my bad. April 19th.
That's our nighttime meeting.
Yeah. In the afternoon.
I don't want to make no six-hour day out of it. I'd like to see what happens, and I'm not trying to be political, but I'd like to see what happens with, when we have our regime change, how that's going to affect the stock market and everything else, because that's, there's going to be some repercussions. And we can't forecast at this point in time what that's going to be. And the other thing I'm concerned about, too, is we don't know what, what our governor's going to do as far as shutting down restaurants and everything else, and how that's going to impact us moving forward. So the further out we can put it, the better off I am, but I'll do whatever the board wants to do.
Good point, Craig. Could, could we maybe not pick a date today? Could we just in our, you know, we'll commit in our mind that as we're moving toward May, that we do want to observe and finally pick a date sometime in April. All right, good. All right, thank you all. Last thing, no, not last thing, man, we got board appointments. Budget amendments, and so those were provided. Motion to approve the budget. Craig motion, Judy second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we've got some board appointments. Boston Heights Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners. We have three that have applied for reappointment. Randall Faggart, Jody Burleson, and Randy St. Clair have applied for reappointment. And then Cleveland Community Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners, Craig Myers, applied for reappointment for a two-year term. Do we have a motion to approve those four?
So moved.
All right, Craig and Judy, motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee, Michael Agee, Amber Phillips, and Patricia Murtaugh have applied for two vacant seats.
I nominate Mike Agee.
I nominate Patricia Murtaugh.
All right, Patricia and Michael, is that who you?
Mike, yeah.
Mike, okay, those two, do we have a second?
I'd second one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right, so Michael and Patricia, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, JCPC, Aaron Smith applied for a vacant general public seat. Motion approved. Okay, Craig, motion, Judy second.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so his name is Aaron, I care that, you know, I forgot to look to see what his qualifications were or what, where he works.
Well, it's a general public seat, so I don't, I don't think it matters.
Okay.
Is that okay, you second that?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Salisbury Rowan Community Action Agency, there's one seat available, and Amy Brown has applied for reappointment. Second application was also received for the seat by Machika Davis.
I nominate Amy Brown.
Amy Brown, should continue. Okay, all right, we had, we do have a motion and a second for Amy Brown, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Therapeutic Recreation Board, Renita Ritchie, applied for reimpor, reappointment, motion and second for her.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay.
Anything else?
Much to adjourn.
Aaron, Craig, second, Judy, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jim, glad you joined us.
Me, too.
Yeah, we'll catch up with you, buddy.
All right.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you, see you.
All right.